Okay, so we need to complete our budget discussion tonight. And we have several other topics to consider during our work session. I think as we discuss the budget, it would be good to remember, or helpful to remember, that each additional penny in our tax levy generates about $36,000. Just for example, a 10 cent increase in the city's tax levy would generate about $360,000 for FY '19, but there'd have to be some action on the part of staff, as I understand it. So Jeff, did you have thoughts about how we're going to move through this? Or I know you gave us that updated memo.
Yeah, so the updated memo was in your January 18th info packet. It has yellow highlights, so it's the same memo you saw earlier in January, the yellows, the highlighted text in yellow is simply indicating what kind of the status of each of the items is. So it's really up to you. I don't have any introductory remarks. You could start with the operating budget or the capital and just work down the list.
I think I want to say one other thing. If I understand correctly, during our first meeting about the budget, we tentatively agreed to add about $90,000 for three separate activities. You know, where the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant, for example, we added $50,000 to it tentatively, and so on. There are like three activities involved there. I suppose we should just turn to the first topic, which are the first item on Jeff's memo, which is the suggestion to increase affordable housing contribution from $650,000 to $1 million for this fiscal year. And as of the moment, we have not made a decision on that. So what do you folks think?
For me, that was my idea, and I wanted to be more forward, of course.
I would certainly be in favor of increasing it somewhat, but not quite up to the $1 million even. If you might consider a $750,000 even, I would consider that.
I'm not in favor of increasing it right now. The 2018 is our first fiscal year to have this size of a contribution. And I'm really concerned about the fact of continuity. Once you start doing things, it's really, really hard to take things back. We have to start taking things away from people. And I think it's very questionable when you look at Jeff's memo and if you go back and look at some of the Moody's comments in the debt report that was in one of our recent info packets as well. We have not yet seen the full impact of the 2013 property tax reform. The multifamily housing is still being implemented. I think it's, what, 2022, Jeff? Somewhere in there that it gets all the way down to...
Pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere around there. So we've still got another four years or so maybe before that gets all the way down to the residential taxation rate. We don't know what's going to happen with the backfill. Some people are saying that depending on the revenue reports or projections this spring, they may start taking that away this year, or they may wait till after the election, which is probably more likely. I would rather stick with where it is, get a better sense of what our finances are going to be in the next year or two, and then gradually increase and make sure that it's something that is sustainable going forward, rather than potentially spiking with peaks and valleys on this sort of thing.
Jeff, I know we've had a conversation with our lobbyist about the backfill, but I don't remember specifically what Jim Carney told us, but can you?
In the governor's proposal, she did not include the backfill. I'm sorry, did not include taking the backfill away. So the governor has signaled that she would like to keep the backfill in. Ultimately, the House and Senate have to go through a deappropriations bill, which they're working through right now. It's anybody's guess as to whether it's included in there, but the feeling that we're getting is that, at least in this initial deappropriation, that should be wrapped up, I would guess, within a couple of weeks, that backfill will be preserved. As Councilmember Mims alluded to, the Revenue Estimating Committee convenes again in March. If you recall, last year, there was a second round of deappropriations that were needed at that time. So folks are a little bit nervous about what the projections will say in March and whether that leads to another round of deappropriations or further budget cuts for fiscal year '19. That's, I would say, if things stay status quo, we look pretty good for the year, but with some bad reports in March, it's back on the chopping block.
I can add to that.
What did the rest of you think?
I was just going to comment. Today, Simon and Andrew and I spent the day in Des Moines, at the legislative day. And so we heard a little bit more about the backfill and what the feeling is there in the Capitol. As Jeff said, they're antsy about the reports back in March, so right now, they're looking at adding to the amount for deappropriations in case the revenues are less than expected or projected. So they're working on that. The other reports that we're getting as far as holding on to the backfill or not, the message from the legislators we heard from is just that it's really important for all the communities to reach out to their legislators and continue talking with them about the value backfill has for them. And that it was, again, as Jeff had said, the feeling is that the backfill is intact, but for this upcoming budget year. And then after that, it should be likely to decrease in the next two or three years.
So we have, by state law, we have to approve the budget, not later than March 15th. Is that right? And after that, we can amend the budget at some point down line. I don't know if there's any time limitation with regard to that. As far as I know, there's not...
You can amend the budget mid-year. You can't raise the tax levy mid-year.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I understand everything about the backfill, but my understanding, when I talked to Jeff, he told me that's going to come out from the reserve. The money is there, and we are not interrupting the budget. And I think we've been talking about affordable housing forever, but even though we have Affordable Housing Action Plan, but I think this is not moving forward. I would like, yes, since the money is there, why not to increase it to $1 million? I like the letters that Tracy sent out, and like, they used half of it last year, and they really done a lot of good stuff there, and we can continue doing the same thing. And that's why I think this is something I have been campaigning on for like nine months. 70% of the voter supported me, 77% of the voter supported me, because that's what I'm going to do. And I will be continuing pushing for it, for everything that I've been campaigning on.
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things. I mean, I definitely understand concerns, because I think that, you know, each of our roles, you know, we have to think about, obviously, the budgetary constraints. And as we think about how we're going to push forward on different initiatives, being cognizant of those, obviously, with staff's help to make sure that we're, you know, moving forward prudently. I would say, though, you know, my focus on this particular initiative is seeing it from the standpoint of, we need to move forward when we can. I think that, you know, Jeff laid out kind of a pretty strong case in the sense where there are some concerns I have with FY '19, and in a similar sense, what Susan had said, as far as the sustainability of this. I think that we've had some conversations as far as, you know, economic development in general. And so this, the money that we have generated that's in surplus may not be there in a year. And I think that that's concerning. But I do feel like that's a conversation that we can have as we're talking about the Affordable Housing Action Plan, as we're thinking about additional things that we can do to move forward, to think about alternative funding sources or revenue sources to that extent. So I'm really comfortable moving forward. I feel like, you know, my main, I think that as we look at it in this particular housing, affordable housing equation, it's tough to kind of see why the extra $350,000 in funding, I mean, four to eight units of affordable housing, I mean, doesn't necessarily rile me up, but I'm actually interested in more how we can change the equation to maybe reallocate some of the resources that we're looking for with that extra $350,000, to look at land banking, some other things that I think are really important. I don't think we should miss this opportunity for the exact same concerns that Susan just mentioned. I totally agree, and think that if we don't allocate the funding now, we won't have that opportunity in the future because of other things that may come down the pike. And I just feel like now is the time.
So you think we should increase it to $1 million, is that right?
I also agree that, you know, this is a really important issue in Iowa City. It was confirmed by our citywide survey, which we just got back. The, in terms of aspects of community characteristics, affordable quality housing was at 24%. It was considerably lower. I think the lowest scoring of all of our attributes was the affordable housing measure. So that also, that tells me not only do, you know, have we on council been speaking of this as a concern, but it's a citywide concern, and at the very top of areas where we're deficient. You know, I hear, Susan, you're concerned about consistency, and I think that is something to consider, although I think Kingsley responded to that pretty clearly. We also have to be, I think, taking, when we have opportunities to increase the fund, we take them. The fact that we may not have the same mechanism by which to increase the fund next year does speak to me about how do we find alternative funding sources to move forward.
Sure.
So we do need to look at that. Plus, we're not at full force with respect to some of our action plan items. One that I was really counting on, we didn't really even implement, and that is the regulatory staff got taken up on other responsibilities and couldn't, couldn't look at that in the detail that was going to be required. So I think for now, this seems like a sensible thing to do. We have the resources, and I think everyone in this community acknowledges that it's a very important issue.
I want to push back on that a little bit, John, but mainly by asking Jeff a question. A few days ago, I was reading that the state was very unlikely to cut the backfill. And now I'm hearing that it's much more iffy. I mean, that's what it feels to me anyhow. Regardless, what if we increase the affordable housing amount to $1 million, and the backfill is either eliminated or reduced significantly? What does that imply for us doing the budget, you know, and making sure we comply with budgetary requirements?
Yeah, so I'll ask Dennis to maybe come on up and help me if I misstate any of this, or fill in the blanks. But when we put together the budget for FY '19, we layered the backfill payments for FY '19 on top of what it takes to operate the city. So essentially, we're counting on the backfill to be a surplus in FY '19. So if the backfill runs out, or does not, if they choose not to distribute that in FY '19, we have a relatively status quo or break-even budget, is that...
Yeah, I think we tried to work around the backfill, because we were not certain as far as what its status was going to be. So I think if it were to go away, we would have to certainly take a look at, you know, where we're at from an operating perspective, but I don't think we'd have to look at any drastic types of cuts. Now, that's without adding any of these further increases into the budget. So I think if there are any changes to the backfill, we would have to go back in, probably just take a look and see what that impact is going to be. But to the budget to this point, we try to work around that as much as possible, or to minimize the impact of any that might take place.
So I think for your, for where you're sitting today, assuming that worst-case scenario where it's taken out next year, it's not really next year that Dennis and I would be concerned about. It's what we're going to do in FY '20 and '21, because I think, as I've mentioned in one of the memos, even the $650 is not a stable revenue source. We're, you know, paying that back with funds that won't be there beyond FY '19. So even with backfill going on, if you're comfortable tapping into the reserves, and that's really an opportunity cost question for you, because those reserves are available for anything, if you're comfortable with it, I think that we'll be okay with whatever decision the state makes for one year.
Okay, thanks. So I'd say I would, like Pauline, I would support increasing the amount to $750, maybe $800, but I don't think it's wise to go to $1 million.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
For Jeff. How much we're going to be planning to reduce the tax levy this year?
15 cents. 15 cents.
Okay. And you're just saying that one cent, you're going to reduce $36,000. 10 cents, we're going to get more than what I asked. Then, why are we reducing it with the priority here? Is that, I know that it's good to reduce the tax, I understand this, but we have to have priorities. I guess if we don't do anything, if we don't nothing, even if we don't reduce it or we don't increase it, so we can do it, especially that we even have something like worried about the backfill and all this, why just like leave it as it is? Don't increase it, don't decrease it, and I guess this is not going to generate any negative, and do this for this year.
Just a real quick comment on the reduction in the tax levy. The reduction on the tax levy is coming from the debt service levy. So the debt service levy is one of several levies that make up the total tax levy. So the total tax levy is coming down. That's because the debt service levy is being reduced by 25 cents. We're actually increasing the employee benefits levy 10 cents already. So if the council wanted to raise the tax levy to come up with the $350,000, I think Dennis's recommendation would be that we tap into the emergency levy that's available to cities. So that's a levy that we do not use right now, but it's a 20, you could use it for up to 27 cents for emergency purposes, and you would have the ability to raise it for this purpose.
If I could jump in here, here's my position. Hopefully, I guess, my view is I'd try to like to synthesize some various points that have been made. I think Susan brings absolutely legitimate point in terms of the long-term budgeting process. We most certainly would not want to convey that this is something we could do every year. But by the same token, I think Mazahir and Kingsley bring up a really good point. We can communicate, I mean, some of them hopefully are in this room, to our affordable housing partners not to expect this increase every year, and to communicate the uncertainty associated even with a $650, even though I think it seems like there's consensus that we will do our darndest to make sure that we do that going forward. And so to the backfill point, what I would like to do is, is I would like to get up to Mazahir's number, but as an intermediate position, I would like a $750,000 number with the expectation, if there's not a reduction in the backfill, we commit to the full $350,000 extra that Mazahir, because I think she is right. I'm setting aside the election. This is a time in our community where we have widespread and vocal support on this issue. I know it's not unanimous. I know not everyone in the community feels that way. They certainly haven't come up in this chamber to vocally oppose what we're doing. And so I think we do have this unique moment. My expectation would be that our affordable housing community could use this to sort of springboard additional efforts in both the owner-occupied affordable context as well as the rentals. So I would like to see an increase now, commit to $750,000, or at least halfway there with the expe, I'm sorry, it'd be $175,000 more with the expectation that if there's no backfill reduction, we'd go the full amount. And we should know that in three weeks, correct? I mean, when would the...
I would say you would know that when they conclude their session.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, when is the end of the legislative session again this year?
July?
It's probably May, June. Sometimes they'll go into June, but typically May.
So I'm comfortable at least with that as sort of a compromised position in terms of these two points.
Well, you get to the point I was trying to ask about with regard to the backfill payments, and about whether we could make a decision now and then have the opportunity to increase the amount in case the backfill was in fact funded, fully funded. And if not, then we wouldn't get ourselves into a complicated situation.
I would just, you know, I don't disagree, obviously, because it gets to that million that, you know, obviously, you know, I'm interested in. I would just say, harking back to John's point and being, having some past experience with budgets, I mean, Dennis, if we, it comes back that there's an issue that we'd make amendment to the budget, right? I mean, if there's, we would, that's just, I mean, in my prior experience working with budgets, things happen all the time, not just focusing just on this. You make amendments to budget all the time. And so again, going back to John's point, we would amend the budget. I mean, if it was, if it was that concerning of an issue that we needed to have a discussion about it again, we would come back together and amend the budget. So I'm not disagreeing with Rockne's point, because I think it's going to get it to some consensus. But again, just from a budgetary standpoint, I feel like it does signal to the community that we're moving forward with $1 million right now. In the event that some information comes down from Des Moines that changes our focus, or anything occurs, not just focusing on just what happened in Des Moines, I mean, there could be some other things that happen that may need our attention, we would have to make some budgetary changes, and that would come in the form of amendments. So I just want us to...
One quick point, though. I would rather amend to increase rather than amend to cut. It's sort of, it's...
I guess the cut is not going to be for this only, when I just started getting affordable housing to cut. We're going to cut a lot of stuff so we can make everything equal. That's why I rather really go forward with the full amount, especially it's coming out from the, you know, the reserve, not from the budget.
I can agree with your suggestion, Rockne. It seems wiser to me to do it that way than to do it this other way. So we don't have any motions on the floor, because it's a work session, but I hear one, two, three people in favor of increasing it to $1 million. Now, I'm agreeing with Rockne's suggestion about increasing it to $750, and later on, increasing it to seven, to $1 million if the backfill remains in place for this coming fiscal year. Would anybody else shift to agree with that, or shift to agree to the million?
If we can build consensus around that, you know, I think it's a reasonable approach. I'd rather we all support it, I think, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Right now, it sounds like one, two, three, four. Four in favor of doing $750 now and increasing it to $1 million unless the backfill payment goes away. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. The next item. I'll just repeat something that we already know. We already decided to increase funding for the Social Justice and Racial Grant Program from $25,000 to $75,000.
Could I add a...
Sure.
Maybe we're all on board with that, but one thought I was having was, not knowing the quality and content of all the proposals that came to the commission, it may, it may be very well that by raising it to $75,000, every good proposal that has come before them would be covered by that increase. But the scenario I was thinking of was, what if there's some really good ones between $75,000 and $100,000 that we will not be able to reach because of running out of grant funding?
I'm not following you. You're talking about individual proposals that are between $75,000 and $100,000, is that what you were...
I'm saying, they got 20-some-odd proposals, I think.
28.
28.
For, to allocate, you know, for 20, a total of $25,000.
Right. Well, but we were talking about raising it to $75,000, correct?
Total, yes.
So the thought I had was, if we were to raise it to $100,000, another $25,000, in other words, would, are there any, would the, has the commission identified beyond the, those grants that would be funded through the $75,000? If there were some they would really like to be able to fund, but their $75,000 allocation has been expended.
I mean, you're going to have another set of applications next year. I think you always, no matter what you've set for the amount of the budget, you always have that potential that you're going to have good proposals that exceed the budget that you've set. So whether it's 25, or 50, or 75, you're going to have a new set of proposals, applications every single year. I mean, the ones I got this year aren't going to be the same ones I use next year. People are going to have to reapply next year with $75,000 in the pot, and you may have $60,000 of really good quality applications, and you might have $120,000 of really good quality applications.
This time, they're like $240,000 or so.
Right. I don't know how, and I don't know how good they were. I've talked to a couple of commissioners, and they were, I think they would like to have been able to support more, but there also were some that they clearly felt were people just trying to create jobs for themselves, so to speak. So there was, there was a real variety, I think, in the quality.
I think last year, they gave us more of an idea of who had applied and who they denied, and so we had kind of an idea of those that maybe weren't appropriate. This time, we didn't have that information.
It's ultimately, it'll come to you in March. It's your decision. They're, they're making a recommendation to you. They have made their recommendation, but they're going to confirm that in their February meeting, and then it'll be on your, one of your March agendas to confirm what their recommendation is and award those grants, or you have the ability to modify what their recommendation is.
The only thing I, go ahead. The only thing I would say related to that is that would be true with every budgeting situation. The one thing, and this may just be a staff discretion issue, for our funding decisions on these grants, I would like to see a lot of grants to a lot of different organizations as opposed to a really high percentage grants to one or two. I know that that's sort of a philosophical debate. Ultimately, it would be a, you know, staff decision in terms of what makes sense, but I view these as sort of, you know, seed funding for a lot of different types of organizations that are doing a lot of really good work, so a little bit of commentary.
Actually, it wouldn't be staff discretion. These, the program itself is under the purview of council.
Okay.
So the Human Rights Commission, I don't think council gave Human Rights Commission any specifics when we first started it, because we didn't know what to expect. But if you wanted to set a maximum grant limit, or a minimum grant limit for the future, you could do that. You could say no grants more than $10,000, or whatever number you felt was appropriate.
And I won't bring that up now, because I think that's the type of proposal that I should give to councils in a memo format. You'd have time to think about it, but just some food for thought for us to think about.
One of the things I like about this process is that the $25,000, the current $25,000 limit, and going through the Human Rights Commission, was an innovation, an experiment. We didn't know how it would work. Suddenly, we get 200 and whatever thousand dollars worth of applications from 20 different, 28 different entities, so we know there's interest. So I can, I want to build on that incrementally. I don't want to make some grand leap and then start really adding a lot of money to it. But it sounds like there's interest. It sounds like there's a lot of innovative proposals coming out, so let's try to marginally increase what we're doing to it. All right, so I think we're still agreed with that, right? 75? Yeah. Okay, let's see. We decided to increase the local food budget from $30,000 to $50,000? Correct?
Correct. Can I make one, can I ask a clarification on that?
Sure.
There was discussion at that same time about this downtown food incubator project, but my understanding of the increase in the local foods budget is you weren't necessarily earmarking that extra 20 for that specific project.
No.
Those were just two different conversations occurring around the same time. So it's still 50 for whatever competitive applications we get in. Yeah, okay.
And Jeff, on that point, quick, I've had some conversations with the leaders of that particular project, and my response to them is that's really something that should go through staff to sort of get that proposal on, and you guys have a sense of how reasonable it is, and bring it back to us. So that's what I thought.
As a parenthetical comment, I noticed that in the consumption-based emission inventory that we got from Brenda Nations, you know, it draws a lot of attention to the importance of food and getting away from animal and dairy products from a carbon emission reduction point of view. So I think that's justification for...
Well, but what was interesting about that was they said, what you eat is more important than how far the food is transported, which was kind of antithetical to what we think about in terms of local food. I mean, I still think local foods are important, but I found that very interesting that it was quantified the way it was, not really surprising, because meat is a very inefficient use of energy.
Yeah. Okay. And we also agreed to add $20,000 for what I described as a public art and wayfinding concept plan along the Iowa River. I want to clarify that just a little bit. This is an unfolding kind of idea connected to activities that the University of Iowa is pursuing, and Jeff and I sat in on a meeting pertaining to that just a few days ago. days ago, also to an endeavor that the Convention and Visitors Bureau supports as a result of its strategic plan process. So, I guess I think of it as a placeholder that would help us with regard to that particular project. Jeff, you're squinting. I don't know if that-
No, no.
That's what I mean by that.
Sorry. Maybe he needs classes.
All right. So-
I've never seen Jeff squint.
I think we now need to move to the capital impro, sorry, capital improvements part of the budget. Is that correct, or did I skip something?
Just a couple of things. So, just wanted to make sure we were not going to, I thought there was, we moved forward on the consulting piece?
Yes.
Retail consultant, yes.
I thought you said that the yellow was what we decided.
Yes. So, council decided to keep the funds in the budget for this purpose, but directed staff to focus the effort on underserved populations.
Never mind. I missed that. Sorry.
I would actually like to comment on that. I'm concerned about limiting our focus on that retail consultant. I don't necessarily disagree with you, Rockney, that it needs to include looking at underserved populations, but we, I think we need to look at any kind of retail in the area with, I think with Kmart leaving, and, you know, we talk about having walkable neighborhoods across the city, and small businesses, and this and that. I think we need to keep that more open-ended, quite frankly.
I mean, I guess for me, because I think I was part of that conversation as well, I mean, maybe it's a word change in a sense. Council decided to keep funds in the budget for this purpose, but directed staff with a focus on underserved populations instead of too focused on underserved populations. I mean, ultimately, it kind of goes back to the conversation we had in relation to, you know, my talk around the toolkit. You know, in the event that we don't ensure that it happens, or we make sure that it's a part of the conversation ahead of time, then it's going to be left out, and then I'm going to have questions about whether or not we're focusing on underserved populations in general. And so, I think it's important to incorporate the language within this particular proposal as it goes out. I can understand what you're saying, Susan. I guess I'm not proposing just a, just a, or retail extraction consultant just for underserved populations. It was more with a thought in mind that we would consider both, so there'd be a width in there as well. So, maybe it's a language, I mean, change from my standpoint.
Maybe with a focus on underserved and traditional retail?
Yeah.
The only reason why I brought that up is, you know, you had talked a lot about the Kmart, and that's a huge area, and so it's like, why not focus in on that? Because it seems to be struggling a little bit retail-wise, and maybe they would have anyway, but maybe not. I mean, maybe they would have focused on other parts of the community. That just seems to be the most pressing need.
Yeah. They'll do a scan of the entire community, and frankly, the research they provide is going to be beneficial to people outside of our community because we're, the retailers aren't looking at what's the Iowa City demographics. They're looking at what's the Johnson County demographics, or what's the Eastern Iowa demographics. So, you know, this is the type of consultant agreement that we would bring to you for final approval. I think I'd get a sense of what you're looking for here. You'll be able to see the scope and be able to amend it if you're uncomfortable with it when we bring it to you, but that'll be several months from now before we even get to that.
Okay. Let's move to the capital improvements part. And the proposal was to consider acceleration of the Robert A. Lee Recreation Center improvements currently budgeted in fiscal year '21, and we have not discussed this yet. So, whose suggestion was this?
I had brought this up, and in part, it was originally a discussion that I had had with staff about this particular project. What I love about this particular project is it's something that's already in the staff's pipeline. They've already sort of identified and working with staff at the Robert A. Lee Center that this proposal, which as I understand it would be making where the racquetball carts are now, to bust out that wall and make it more permeable with the area that's currently served in the parking lot as well as the farmer's market. A nonprofit, my goal would be to connect this to the bike library. We can talk about that, because one of the things in terms of, you look at all the different initiatives that we're trying to achieve, social justice, exercise, carbon reduction, placemaking, skill development, you know, I wasn't successful on the, you know, the maker space, but really, a bike library has that element. I mean, where you're learning tool development, you're learning how to use tools. I think that's a component of what they do, and the fact that it provides essentially resources for, you know, some of the low-income residents of the city, including city councilors. I actually bought a bike there like two years ago. Not every bike fits me, but I did find one there. So, it's really a service that provides for everything. And the reason why I want to move it up is that the bike library has struggled to sort of find in a space. They're a well-established, long-term organization, most importantly, with an extensive track record, that we know that they're going to be doing something amazing there. So, my recommendation was we move it up to 2019. We authorize staff for funds for, I think it's like 60,000 for the consultant, and then we reach out to that particular organization and move forward on that as opposed to sort of an open-ended process. I think they're sort of a unique entity that really do fit nearly perfectly, and it brings them back to their historical roots. They were at Wilson's Sporting Goods store, and to be able to bring them back almost to where they started would be a perfect sort of, you know, ending to that whole process.
So, Jeff, a budgetary follow-up here. What would be the budgetary implications of doing this?
Well, we would need design funds in this particular year, so you're probably looking at, I'm guessing, 40,000, 50,000, somewhere in that ballpark. I typically think of about 10% of project cost for design funds. We would get that design then going this year. We do have some very conceptual studies that have been done, so we'd have a little bit of a head start on it, but we'd move to design. And I think, you know, constructing the improvements next year would be pretty aggressive, but it's probably in the realm of possibility if you wanted to move the entire project up to 2019. But really, until we get into the design, it's hard to know all the variables that may come into play.
Okay.
So, short answer to your question, I'd have to consult, we'd probably put about 40,000 to 50,000 of the general fund. This 475 is, although it's in the capital plan, it's actually general fund dollars. So, we would move some of those funds up to the current year.
So, I would actually, I mean, Jeff, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. I didn't want to cut you off. So, I'm wholly, very much supportive of this. You know, I've talked a little bit, talked a little bit with Rockney. I actually want to take it a step further, and more from a design standpoint, I guess, initially. You know, I know that, you know, this particular project is just looking at improvements within the Robert A. Lee Recreation Center, as well as, you know, the potential for, Rockney was talking about as well, which I'm very excited about. It did beg the question for me initially was, why just them? And when I started thinking about that a little bit, what I'm getting to is, I was interested in possibly looking at, looking at just design, so I'm not saying we should, but going up. And I'm only talking about going up as far as building on top of the rec center. I'm only talking about one to two stories, and the reason why I'm bringing that up is, in the same sense that Rockney was talking about creating space for the bike library, which I bought a bike from as well, and it was like super cheap, so I really enjoyed it. It was great, and was riding around until it broke. But there's other organizations out there that are nonprofits that have always been thinking or looking for space. We, I think we've talked about this before, at least I've talked about it before, maybe not necessarily in council, but just out in the community, that city space is something that, you know, is hard to come by, you know, it's something that, you know, we have to think long and hard about as far as what we're doing with that space. I think we had that conversation when we were talking about the project just right across the way, as far as, you know, losing that city space and the importance of what that meant, and why we want it to do in that particular fashion. And so, my only piece of this, and I don't necessarily know how much of that would increase the cost, but I would just increase the scope. Doesn't mean that council would move forward on that, but I'd just be interested in what the consultant would come back with by introducing an extra floor, maybe two, for potential for nonprofit spaces to be a part of the rec center as well.
I think you're increasing the amount, the cost, a lot. That's what it sounds like to me. I mean, Jeff and other staff would have to answer that question, but that's a big-
I couldn't answer it now. The design cost, I mean, you'd add, I don't know, tens of thousands to the design cost, obviously to construct a couple of new floors on the building if it could support that-
Yeah, that's my question.
Would be incredibly expensive.
I mean, I think that even within the scope of this particular question, it'd be interesting to know just whether or not it would even support it. I mean, I think that that would have to go within some of the design as far as just within the individual improvements. So, I mean, I think that even if you're, even your comment, Jim, in that sense, you know, that's still maybe two steps out from, you know, we don't even know if the building supports it. And so, I think that within the understanding of the improvements that are happening currently, I think asking that question, having an answer, a solid answer on that question, I think would be important, just in general.
We could, you know, as part of the scope, have a very rough question to the design team, the architects, said if the city wanted to expand the rec center operations, what options are there, and not necessarily program space, and not say it's for this purpose or that purpose, but they could look at it structurally and say, yes, you can build out into the parking lot, or you can build up above the pool, or this or that. We may have even done some of that. Julie's shaking her head. If you've got information, come on up, Julie, but that type of scope addition wouldn't be too expensive if we're not actually designing space.
You'd have to have an opinion to see if it could go up based on the age and the structure of the current building. I know at one point, there was a study that showed expansion of the gym space in one way or another. I don't have the specifics on that, but I know that was looked at before as well.
Well, I very much like Rockney's initial idea. I know that's very much underutilized space at the moment. Jeff, you and I have talked about it before. It seems like there's considerable potential there for that particular space. I can see doing exactly what you suggested with regard to getting some general sense of, you know, what would be, whether the building could be built upon as a whole. But otherwise, I like the idea of moving ahead with the design. I mean, the only real question is, should we ask the staff to focus the design on a bike library for that space, or something else, or alternatives for that space? Julie, what do you think?
I would just mention that when we added the money, or the request into the budget, it contemplated just making that a shell. So, making the space usable by another group with an outside entrance, but just simply a shell to the space, not any finishes or anything on the inside. So, that would be an additional cost, and would leave it open for design for whatever group, you know, maybe would go in there, and potentially that would be their contribution is to finish off the space on the inside.
I like the idea of the bike library. It's kind of in harmony with our Bike Master Plan, and kind of what the community wants as far as biking, and I think that would be a good use of it.
Normally, I don't like choosing specific organizations, but I just think, given this particular organization's history in that location, coupled with even just the fact that the police store, the, what are those stolen bikes they put in Chauncey Swamp? There's a lot of bikes there. I think it makes sense in this particular context to focus on them.
What do the rest of you think?
I think it seems like a reasonable idea. It does seem to me that some consideration should be given. You know, jumping to the bike library may or may not, it sounds like a good idea. It seems like there should be some preliminary phase to this process that verifies that. I would say that. And then furthermore, I think it would be useful to better understand, in my view, kind of building on Kingsley's comment, how doing this may or may not interfere with any future plans on the site, whether it's expanding the current building, or building into the parking lot area, just kind of confirming that this isn't going to then close the door on some other options that might present themselves later. But that's a dead space, so it does seem, it seems worthwhile to utilize it. And I do like the idea, the way it would open up the building to the east. I think that's a benefit, too.
Jeff, my understanding when you and I talked about this was that you felt that this wouldn't really, because I think I asked that basically the same question that John's asking, that in doing this, and obviously, this is only the design piece anyways, but it's not going to have a negative impact on the other future design and development and things. I mean, is this that we might do, or are we kind of closing some certain doors if we do this?
Well, I think it'd be hard to expand the gym ever if we did this. If you wanted to ever double the size of the gym, or add space for, you know, additional courts, or whatever it may be, that may be a challenge. But, you know, the way those rooms operate now, racquetball and the game room, our staff does not have any eyes on them. There's certainly accessibility concerns. They're just not good spaces for us right now. So, I don't envision, I don't envision that we could even use them for anything else other than really what they're used for now, and we're not really even very comfortable with how they're used now. So, yeah, I think, other than gym expansion, I don't really see-
So, basically, it would preclude gym expansion?
Yeah, I would assume you have to build out for the, for, ever to expand the gym, you'd have to build into that space. Now, you might be able to expand the gym and then build a, you know, build a shell further out into the parking lot for the type of space that we're alluding to here, but we don't, the path that staff is on right now does not include a gym expansion. We weren't looking at that. If that's a priority, then yes, I think this whole thing gets called into question. We need to have that discussion. Do we want to look at expanding the gym?
And I'm not saying I do. It's just, I, kind of like what John is saying, I don't want to do something that then in 10 years, we're like, darn, why did we do that? Because now it precludes something else that we would really like to do.
I'm not 100% certain on this, but the gym expansion idea may have been before the Scanlon Gym was added to Murter. So, I mean, that's, very likely, the timing of it, that some of the use went to Scanlon or to Alexander, where we use the school gym there, too.
So, we're looking at 40,000 to 50,000 just for design work?
That's a guess, yeah, but that's based on the cost of the project. That's probably a pretty good range. And we should clarify, there probably will be some other things we try to bring in. So, the 475 is, I think, more than we think is needed to do, just shell the space, as Julie was saying. There's a whole list of accessibility improvements that need to take place at Robert A. Lee, and we just completed the first round of their, one of many rounds of those. So, we would look to bring in a couple of other things as budget allows. So, this could be a little bit bigger than just shelling the space, but we'd essentially work within that $475,000 budget, do as much as we can.
Any other comments?
So, I mean, again, I would go back to, if we can get some type of general opinion as far as our options are concerned, similar to-
I think that's already understood.
So, what we'll do is, we will internally have some discussions on scope. We'll try to frame that up for you. We'll schedule a work session. I would like some firm direction from council as to whether you want us to work directly with the bike library from the start, or as John alluded to, if you would like us to consider some type of call for proposals, or call for interested parties to determine if there's other uses that may be, that may fit in there. So, we'll put this on the pending work session and try to frame up the issue for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right. The only other item I'm aware of, it concerns North Market Square Park, improvements to it. We haven't discussed this yet. I'm not sure where the idea, I don't know specifically what the idea is, so-
I have that, and I have another that I think didn't make the list that I'll follow up with. The North Market Square Park Improvement Project was related, or triggered by the fact that the school addition at Horace Mann will basically take place and displace the schoolyard that's there now. And so, the school stands to lose, and I don't recall the exact figure, but I would say over 10,000 square feet of yard space will be lost in what was already, in terms of outdoor usable space, a very limited area. So, the burden in terms of usable outdoor space for Horace Mann, once the renovation is complete, will be dependent on the acquisition of the property where there's the duplex and the use of North Market Square. So, my concern, knowing the nature of what was in the schoolyard, which included a school-age play area- the, in the schoolyard, which included a school age play area, losing that space could have some impact on the way in which North Market Square has been designed, particularly the quadrant of North Market Square where we have the schoolyard, or the school play structure. That play structure and the, the play area around the structure were designed, I would say primarily, the structure itself was for younger children, and then the more all ages were accommodated by the rest of the play features to some degree. So my concern was, and it was really kind of in trying to anticipate what might happen, do we, do we want to budget a limited amount of funding to work with the programming of North Market Square as it relates to the programming of the, what's remaining of the outdoor spaces at North Market Square, to try to make sure that the, whatever is lost, other than the usable space itself and the yard, from a programmatic standpoint, could be mitigated by adjustments at North Market Square.
What dollar figure are you talking about, John?
I would imagine it's somewhere south of $50,000. I mean, the schoolyard is not that large. But one might want to adjust what's there, take out maybe a bay of swings, replace that with a more high, high intensive use than the swing sets, at least that one bay of swings, and see what, what adjustments need to be made to improve the, the age appropriateness of what's in the school, park playground.
Jeff, have you had any conversations with Steve Merly that relate to this particular suggestion?
No, I haven't received an update from him, where they are with their plans. I do know that Steve had mentioned the possibility of the school district wanting to pay for a playground replacement there. So I'll be, although that's new, they would look at their students using our play structures more so than they have in the past, and so they might want to update those. But that's a conversation that occurred months ago. I don't really know where they stand on it.
In their timeline, Horace Mann is going to be renovated next year is the plan, right? Because they'll be out at the new Hoover.
Correct.
So we're in 18, no, we're in 17, 18 now. So the 18, 19 school year, they're going to be empty. They'll come back in the fall of 19.
Believe that is the plan, yes.
Okay.
I'm not supportive of this until we know what the school district is going to do. And I imagine they would budget it for their own. I know there's some uncertainty there, but to me, it's already been renovated, and it's, that's a lot of money. And I think that should be part of a strategic planning. So I'm not supportive.
Yeah, I want to hear what the school has in mind. If they've already talked about the fact that they might expect to pay for some of that, then I'd like to hear more about that.
Sounds like there's a decision there. Sorry, John.
Well, I hadn't heard that the school district was interested in possibly renovating the playground. So that, that may be, we don't know.
Again, it was more conversational with Steve at the time, as they were thinking about what, what the improvements may have. So I don't know if that's still the case, but at least at one point, that was on the table.
Okay. The other thing that I'd spoken with, with Jeff at one of the two-on-ones was the East Side Sports Complex tree buffer is a $78,000 item, and whether, at this particular point in time, that should be funded. At the time, it seemed to me that what would be more pressing would be applying $78,000 toward plantings that, that could, for example, be used toward climate mitigation, once we have the action plan. I'm assuming that the action plan will include actions related to the urban canopy to address heat island effect, which, from what I understand, in terms of the state of Iowa, that's going to be a key issue looking forward, is the increase in, in temperatures. And heat island effect is, is an important one. So it was primarily in response to that. At this point in time, we don't know what the use of those lands that are currently being earmarked for the East Side Sports Complex will actually, how, in what way will that actually take place? So it seemed to me both in terms, and until we have a better, clearer idea of what, what we're buffering, and frankly, the additional benefit that would come from planting trees in a context where they would actually benefit those of us who live here now, keeping in mind that with tree plantings, there's always a time lag in terms of their effectiveness. So trying, trying to get a head start on putting them where we would achieve the most benefit was what I had in mind.
Jeff, am I correct in thinking this would be a budget item, not a CIP item? Or would it be CIP?
It's, it's listed in the CIP.
Okay.
You meant at the general fund?
I believe it's a general fund contribution. And our rationale was really what you were, what you were saying, John, is trying to get a head start on that area, knowing that whether it's a sports complex, a residential neighborhood to the north where the school is, that there's going to be a need for a landscape buffer against the rail line and the industrial property to the south. So we were kind of factoring in that, yeah, five, 10 years is maybe when that residential area starts to take off, or maybe when the park takes off. And to get ahead, five, 10 years of tree growth would be good. But it's nothing that we feel incredibly strongly about. If you'd rather see those monies moved for trees somewhere else, or taken out of the budget, or put to another use, we're okay with that.
I would like to leave it in. I've sort of evolved on this project a little bit. You know, on the one hand, I was like, well, do we really need an extra soccer park? But on the other hand, I do think for these major projects that we've had in there for a while, before we sort of indicate that we don't want to do it, we should really telegraph that to the community and indicate that we're thinking of modifying it substantially. So to your point, it does take a while to get those trees going. And if it does go in, why not get an early start on that? And if we are going to make a big change on that, I think that's something we should really telegraph to the community, because I'm assuming that that just didn't come out of nowhere. I mean, there's been a lot of planning on that particular project, and I wouldn't want to change course until we get substantial community input on a project of that magnitude. So I'd want to keep it in.
It's in the Parks Master Plan, right? The sports complex?
Yeah.
Did we have a work session discussion about like four, five years ago? I think we did.
When the, when the concept was finished, we had one to start it. I think council approved the contract to do the plan. And then when it was finished, we presented it. It's never made it into a funded year of the CIP.
Yeah, it's not clear to, thanks for that background. But it's not clear to me that there's council support for, for the idea in the first place, because we, this council at least has not really had that discussion.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to be clear about-
Or against it, though, at this point.
What's already been discussed and what hasn't. Right.
The money for the tree buffer was that in this year's CIP? Or, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just-
I think it's this year's.
This year's, you mean the one we're considering now, John?
It's 2019.
Okay, so the one we're considering, so the one we're considering now?
Yeah, for the CIP, we always tell you, think of that as the construction year. So put the fiscal year aside, so we'd actually plant in fiscal year 19.
So what John's requesting is not anything different that was already presented to us from staff? We've just seen so many things in the CIP. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that right.
I think John's suggesting that we, we take those funds and deploy them in, in a different way, plant somewhere else in the city.
Yeah, instead of whatever it is, 70 some odd thousand for that tree buffer.
Okay, so you're saying not do the tree buffer out there?
Correct.
Oh, I'm, okay, I totally misunderstood what you were saying, then.
But instead allocate the money to urban tree canopy?
Right.
Yeah, I would not agree with that at this point, because we haven't even had a discussion about that park and our support or lack thereof for that. So I think we need to have that kind of conversation before we decide to plant the trees somewhere else.
Shouldn't we also talk about it before we decide to spend 70,000 on them? Can we have that entire discussion? Or not?
What Jeff did point out quite correctly, I think, that even if we do not move ahead with the sports complex out there, probably not moving ahead means that it would be developed residentially. So that means a tree buffer would probably be a good thing. So the point there is, in either case, a tree buffer is a good idea. So that's the real question. Do we want to build it, or plant a tree buffer along that rail line, regardless of what's going to be on the other side? Or do we want to reallocate those funds, as John has suggested? I think from a carbon point of view, it doesn't matter. They're trees.
Well, it does mean, it does matter in terms of heat index. You know, if you're, if we're planting them as a tree buffer, as opposed to-
Yeah, okay.
In an urbanized area where, where the residential population would have more direct benefit, I would say it does matter.
I would say I'm not supportive. I would say not supportive in part. I mean, I'm not-
Of what? I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm asking you to clarify, because I think we've kind of talked about different things.
So I guess, yeah, you're right. That's, not supportive of the park master plan, no.
Agree, disagree, anything, right?
Yeah. I'm not supportive of kind of what you're talking about as far as reallocating the funds for this urban tree canopy idea. I actually like the idea. I'm more interested in, I guess, having that conversation as we come up on particular projects, more so at that particular point. And maybe I'm misunderstanding what the urban tree canopy would mean. I was more thinking about it as we have this conversation around ped mall reconstruction, other things, ensuring that, or even road design, ensuring that we have more trees to, you know, go to the issues that I think you're talking about, heat index and other things. I'm not necessarily moved on it tonight. But I think that as we look at other, I mean, other projects down the line, I think I would be more interested in hearing more about it, and how that would then tie into our conversation at that time.
Anyone else? So I'm not going to support it either, John. I think we should just stick with the idea of planting these trees along the rail line, expecting that something will develop on the other side of the line. And when I think about urban heat, was it heat island effects? That means the canopy would have to be put where concrete is, where asphalt is, you know, shading, that stuff, so that it doesn't build up the heat, right?
More developed area.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah. So anyhow, I support keeping it the way it is now. So, I don't know, that's one, two, three, four. Okay, so we're going to keep it the way it currently is. All right. As far as I know, we're done with the budget discussion. So we have a tentative set of recommendations, which will be built into the budget. We'll get a revised budget, come back to us, and then on March 15th, we'll vote on it. I think that's right. We'll have a public hearing on the 20th, or-
Yeah, the public hearing gets set on the 20th. I think the actual meeting date is the 6th.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is there anything else anybody wanted to get on this budget discussion topic?
Whether it's a strategic plan or operating, we still haven't taken up Musa here's transportation and the $15 issue, have we?
Yes, we discussed that in the strategic-
Okay, because I just wanted to make sure there was, okay, strategic plan. I didn't know whether we needed to follow up in terms, okay.
Also, I don't know, this is where we can't discuss this, but I'm going to say it, and you tell me. Really interesting, since we've been talking about affordable housing forever, really interesting, I'm betting like a task force or committee together, so from people who have really experience, and how we can solve like affordable housing or ideas in Iowa City. And I don't-
It's a good idea, but there is an affordable housing-
Coalition.
Coalition, which consists of most of the people in the city who have been working on this topic for years and years and years.
I know. But I mean, like, those people, they work on Johnson County, like for Johnson County. But I mean, something especially to work with us, so we can come with ideas, or to see how we can do even budget this on the budget next year, or how we can, like, get some ideas of like rent assistance, idea about like more housing that we can, like, own, we can own houses, like some ideas, you know, just for Iowa City. And like, one of us can be there, and like something for Iowa City. Maybe it could be from the same people. But we need just something like this, so we can really be serious about affordable housing. If we, if we haven't done something like this, we're just going to talk about it forever, and we're not going to do anything.
I'm wondering for this, along those lines, for that 350,000 that probably we're going to end up doing, that we would have a, since it's sort of going to be a one, places I see it, probably a one-time thing, that we would consider a task force for that amount to make sure that that's optimally spent along those lines?
I don't agree with that. We've gone, we've gone with Johnson County Housing Trust Fund, kept my name. And I, to me, we decided last time to use them because, I mean, they've done so much of this for so long, and, and have a good reputation, and know how to work with the developers. I mean, even from that memo we got from Tracy-
It could be with them, I mean-
I mean, that, that 650 from this year, I mean, they've allocated to two developers 325. That may not get spent for another year or two, depending on low-income housing tax credits and stuff. But I really felt good about our discussion last year about who we would have handle that money, because there are people who've been working for decades in this community with great success. So I think trying to put together-
I wasn't saying ad hoc. I mean, it may be them. I mean, I was thinking like Sarah Barron.
No, I, I don't think Sarah and that group have the, the technical expertise, though, that like Mary Ann Dennis with the Housing Fellowship, or Tracy Aukkenbach and her group with the Housing Trust Fund have.
They're on the coalition.
Right.
Yeah, Mary Ann and-
Right, they're, they're on the coalition.
I guess I would say, I was real quickly, for me, I agree with you. I understand where you're getting at, because I do think, you know, while there have been people that have done it for years, there may be some ideas that they have that may be new, other people that may have ideas as well. I do think we're jumping the horse just a little bit, or jumping the gun just a little bit in a sense, because I thought during our strategic planning session, we talked about, you know, completing our current affordable housing action plan and talking about potentially revising. I think that to that extent, if we're thinking about revising, I think, Jeff, you're saying that you're coming forward with us in the next month or two months with some of the work that's come out of the Tax Abatement Committee. I don't think it's the right word, Rent Abatement Committee, whatever that was, I think it was Tax Abatement Committee. I think that when we have that conversation in more of a cohesive sense, we can discuss that as well. I mean, I think it's a great point. I think that we kind of have it set up to where we can discuss it at that time.
I agree. It seems to me that this really is not a budget conversation for the current fiscal year budget. It's about strategic plan. So I think our next work session, we're going to be talking about the strategic plan, trying to finish that up. So it can be brought up right then.
Sure, I will bring it.
Yeah, okay.
I had just a question, and it sprang to my mind after looking at that community survey, in that 61% of the people thought our street repair was not good. And John and I have talked about this before, too, that at our listening posts, that comes up constantly. We get emails about it, we get phone calls about it, you know, why aren't they fixing my street? My question, I guess, is like, how can we allocate, or is it possible to allocate more money for the streets department? Where would that come from? And can we do that now? Because it's necessary.
Sure. So this current fiscal year, we did add two staff members to the Streets Division, primarily paid out-of-the-road use tax funds. And my years are fleeting here, but I think since maybe 2012 or 13, we've increased our road resurfacing budget by 200 and some percent.
It used to be 500,000.
Yeah, every year, we've been really adding to that. This year will be the highest it's been in a long time. And if you look at the budget, every year, we add another 100,000 to that. So the, the answer is, we are ramping it up. It was way too low for way too long, and we're seeing the consequences of that. We'd still like to get it higher. It's just, it's tough to go from zero to 60 and get there. But I think we're making some good progress. If you do want to add more to it, there's certainly a never-ending list of projects on roadways that we could add to our resurfacing list. I'd want to just have maybe Dennis talk a little bit about where we are in terms of a reserve in the road use tax fund. I think we're operating at a slight surplus in that fund now. So, you know, annually, we're taking in maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars more than we're spending, and that's just being banked in a reserve. So we probably have the ability to draw down those reserves a little bit for, for road resurfacing. But keep in mind, road projects are very expensive. So you want to have a big reserve, because inevitably, there will be some challenge that comes up, where you might need a couple million dollars to tackle a road. So I feel pretty good with where we're at on road resurfacing. I understand people's frustrations, especially this time of year. I mean, you know, the next two months are the worst for the conditions of our roads. And then the asphalt plants start operating again, and we get them patched up, and, you know, they're better throughout the remainder of the year. But if council would like to allocate more, more than what staff has increased, we can certainly accommodate that.
Yeah, we should be clear about this. Roadway, the condition of our streets deteriorated for years and years and years, because there was nowhere near enough money coming to us from the road use tax. And about, what, three- from the road use tax. And about, what, three years ago, I think it was, that we got more, started getting more money from the state through the road use tax, because they increased that tax. So three years ago, it was like 500,000 we were receiving. Now it's what, 1.7, I think, for this budget, something like that. So we're able to do more with that, and that's great. But we still have a huge backlog of streets that need improvement. And we cannot afford to do all that quickly. Can't do it.
So most of the cities that have, you know, pretty robust resurfacing programs rely on a local option sales tax. You saw Cedar Rapids, 100% of their local option sales tax is for roads. They passed that a couple of years ago. I think they're probably close to 20 million dollars a year into their roads now because of that. That's the kind of magnitude of investment that you really need to make quick progress on a road network as big as ours. So while I like that we're able to increase it every year, and we are getting more done, you're going to continue to hear complaints. You know, if we do that survey again in a couple of years, you're probably going to see a similar number. I'm not sure we'll make a huge dent, but-
It's hard to catch up.
Yeah.
But that's good. That's good to hear in those numbers, that there is progress. That's good.
Okay. I'd like to suggest we move to our next topic, because-
Yes, one second. I have something else. I know that we talked about the transportation study at the strategic planning meeting, and I know that you guys agreed to do it, but I would like to ask, is this a budget thing? Do we have to budget for it this year? Or are we gonna do it when?
Transit study's already in the budget. I don't remember how much.
So it's the 200,000 in the budget, and what we would like to do is get some confirmation from the neighboring communities on who is interested in participating and what they envision the scope to be. Obviously, you all need to have a conversation about what you want that scope to be. I would love to get into the process of consultant selection in April or May, so that we can start in July, in August, as soon as the fiscal year, and get this thing going, because it's going to be at least 12 months. If we do get other cities or the university that want to participate, that 12 months is probably going to grow to 14, 16, 18 months. It's just going to become more complex of a study. So I think our, I think our funds are there. If we've miscalculated and need more, I feel comfortable that we have plenty of transit reserves to increase that amount. So-
Sure.
Is this an MPO conversation, as far as getting the other communities, or are you going to reach out and do that? No, we've reached out to them. I think, I think they're all interested, but just like you all are going through strategic planning and budget, all these other communities are too. And I think as they conclude their discussions, then the administrators and the folks over at the university will be able to come to us and say, this is what we would like to see in terms of evaluation of our system, and here's what we can bring to the table in terms of financial resources. And then we do a joint, you know, we'd invite them onto the consultant selection committee and get the process going.
Thanks.
Okay. So let's move to the second item on our work session agenda, form-based code development for the north side and the south districts, especially around Alexander Elementary. Are you going to give us a presentation, Jeff?
I have one slide here. So I had a, Tracy Heichu and I had a phone call with the folks from Opticos who did our initial feasibility study. We're in a situation right now where the three staff people that were working with Opticos have either left or will soon be leaving us. So Tracy and I had a phone call to get up to speed on what Opticos' impressions were moving forward. I had seen a couple of budget proposals that they had sent our staff in the last couple of months, and these are, these are some rough numbers. When you're developing a form-based code, there's lots of variables. There's lots of pieces that you can take in and out. How robust of a public input process do you want? Do you want to do any additional studies to go along to help maybe make the case for form-based code, either with residents or with developers? So I've tried to get a handle on what that looks like and summarize that for you. This is a very rough summary of generally the options as provided by Opticos. The form-based code, that's the FPC and Traditional Neighborhood Design Ordinance, that's the meat and potatoes of it. That's what you'd expect to get. That's at a very basic level. That's what we have to get here. If we just look at the south district slide, Opticos is recommending a couple of subconsultants that they would bring on for the south district, a residential market study. They felt it was important to be able to get a sense of what types of housing could sell. They feel very strongly that this has the potential to be a mixed-income neighborhood, but they feel like it may be a hard sell for people to believe that it could be a truly mixed-income neighborhood. So they like to bring on a subconsultant to discuss or to analyze what the market could support, especially with some of the newer housing types that they would be recommending, what the market for those may be. They also have a transportation planning subconsultant that they would suggest bringing on. This would be not only for roadway network design, but for, I think how they framed it, is optimization of utility placement. So making sure the right-of-way is narrow, as narrow as it can be, yet still accommodating all the utilities, which takes some extra coordination. They also suggested a four-day charrette, so they would essentially bring their team here and do a community charrette for four days, which is a pretty extensive process. And then the miscellaneous is just everything else, the kickoff meetings and the consultant discussions and work that gets lumped in there. So the, roughly what we're looking at, to do everything that they'd want to do, is a 445,000 expense on the south district. If you flip over to the north side, it's not, they're not, you don't necessarily need the residential study and the transportation planning. It's, you know, a built-out area of the community. So they dropped those two components. They would also not see the need to do as robust of a public outreach process because it is built out, because you're not designing something from scratch, so to speak. So they would, they would recommend some targeted workshops that could be held with the north side neighborhood. The Ronald Street pilot is interesting. Council may recall that a year or two ago, the city took possession of a property on Ronalds. It's a little larger lot than's typically found in single-family neighborhoods, so it presents a really unique opportunity to do a missing middle type of project. So they would help us conceptualize what that Ronald Street pilot project may look like. They put together some initial concepts and designs that then the city could use to issue an RFP, or maybe test some of the code provisions that they would recommend. So the north side project comes in a little less expensive because of the reduced scope there. And then you see the asterisk at the bottom, in additional service, and this is really something that I feel is necessary. It's nothing that Opticos is recommending, but I think it's important to make sure whatever new code is developed aligns well with our existing form-based codes. And I mentioned the Riverfront Crossings code here, but you need to speak the same language. You need to have similar processes. So I really want Opticos to spend some time learning that Riverfront Crossings code, to understand how it's organized, so that when our staff is reviewing proposals, or developers, and architects, and engineers are looking at our code, that there's some continuity there between those. The second thing I'd like to have them focus on in the review of the Riverfront Crossings code is potentials for simplification of any standards we have, added administrative flexibility. The code's only three, four years old right now, but we've had a lot of development in the Riverfront Crossings area. We've also had to do a number of code amendments in the Riverfront Crossings area, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of design review issues that come up. You know, we recently had the code change, I think the most recent one, for the step backs. Remember, really for the Hieronymus project, we had to change the code to allow for alternatives to step backs in that particular location. So I'd just like their thoughts on whether there's some things that we could do to simplify standards and perhaps to provide some more administrative flexibility. Ultimately, whatever the recommendations would be, would have to go through P and Z, and to you, you would have to be comfortable with those. But I think it'd be nice to have a third-party review of that code for us. And they've quoted a cost of $10,000 to do that review. So how do we go forward? Your budget has 385,000 in there, which is what we felt we could afford, given all the other priorities. And after talking with Opticos, I think we have some options to get that number down. So I'd like to go through what I feel is important after talking with, with Dan Perolak and his team. So I personally feel the south district is more of a priority. It's a greenfield site. It's something that's portable. We could take whatever's developed and plug it into other greenfield sites in the community. Whereas the north side change happens more incrementally. So I think the urgency is at the south district now. We know Macalester's going to get built through. We know the school's there. We know there's some interest coming. So the highlighted pieces are what I'm recommending to you that, that we focus on, and I think by focusing on these, we can get down into that 385,000 level. I was a little skeptical on the residential market study, and I probably didn't do it justice as I was sitting here describing it to you. But I do, after talking with, with Dan and John on his team, feel that that study could go a long way to communicating to the development community and to the finance community, how a different type of housing in Iowa City can be viable. So I do feel that's important. I did not highlight the transportation planning. I would feel comfortable dropping that. I think we as staff really fully understand where this council is on design standards for roadways. We're working on those design standards. We know, I think we feel strongly that we know what you're looking for, and that we wouldn't need necessarily the assistance in designing some road standards for that. I'm also not really sold on the utility placement portion of their, of their scope. I think we can work through that. We've done so in other areas of the community. So that's about a 70,000 expense, that transportation planning piece. And I feel comfortable that we can, we can drop that and still get a good, compact, kind of new urbanist grid network in there that, that would serve the community well. The four-day charrette, I highlighted it, but I don't think there's a need for a full four-day charrette. You know, there's, we're talking a greenfield site here, so you're really thinking there's probably a few neighbors in the adjacent areas that are interested. There's certainly going to be a few property owners and developers that are interested. But I think we can scale that back to maybe a couple of days of workshops, which would save a considerable amount of money. A four-day charrette to bring their planning team down here and hold this is over 100,000. So I think we could probably safely cut that in half and reduce that, reduce that process a bit. After hearing the council talk at the strategic planning session a little bit, we talked to Dan and said, if we, if we just focus on the south district, what's possible on the north side? And I think, John, you talked, maybe using your term here, but some form-based code light. What are some interim steps that we can take to perhaps promote missing middle development in the north side, but within the framework of our existing code? And so Dan thought that that was possible. They haven't scoped that out for us, but he thought that they could do some things and, and help with that. And I also think they could make some suggestions and help us with some code language that could also be applied to situations like we had on Lusk Avenue with the Kinnick House. And we remember if we talked, when we talked about that, and we're responding to some of the neighborhood concerns, we talked about how the form-based code would produce some tools that would help with that. And I still, I don't want to lose sight of that. I think there's some things that we can do there that would help us. But we would not go so far as to develop the form-based code there. I do think the Ronald Street pilot is intriguing. That's about a 12,000 cost. At least that's what they have listed there now. And we might be able to bring that, bring that down a little bit. But if we're going to do some code changes, I really like the idea of showing how those code changes can be put to use in a practical sense, by looking at our lot, which we have no desire to keep long-term. We can then spin it out and hopefully demonstrate the type of infill development that, that we're seeking in the north side. So that's, I feel like we can get pretty close to 385, if you're comfortable with that, but I want to give you an opportunity to discuss that. The other question that needs to be put on the table is whether we go out for competitive proposals. Typically, in a contract of this scale, we would do an RFP and see what, see what other firms offer in terms of price and scope. In this case, we've already worked with Opticos. They're already invested in the project. They did the feasibility study. They've laid the groundwork. I think we would all like to work with them directly, but they are recognized as the best of the best when it comes to developing these form-based codes, and you have to pay for the best of the best, if that's what, if that's the level of service that you want.
How much would that delay, if we went up for competitive bidding? How much of that would delay the process?
Oh, probably four months.
Oh, four months, okay.
Five months, yeah, something.
How much would the residential market study cost?
I believe it was 31,000.
And final question is, how much would it cost the city just to do the open bidding process? That's the minimus, right? That would just be staff time?
Just staff time.
Okay.
Seems to me this is a question we didn't want to have to be asked. Force is a difficult choice. You know, I like the recommendations you've made. I've thought about this a lot, trying to figure out which, you know, we've got alternative ways we could proceed. And I agree that the north, not that, I agree that the area around Alexander Elementary, the south district, should be the highest priority, because I keep seeing developments on the periphery. And if we want to alter our land development process in a way that's consistent with missing middle, form-based code, et cetera, we've got to, we've got to start where action's happening. So I'm supportive of that, and I like the missing middle light idea that you proposed. I think I'll be silent about the Ronald Street pilot, because I live about three houses away from it. So that's what I think, yeah. The question about issuing RFP, seeing what other bidders might say, I'd be curious what the rest of you all think.
I would agree with you, Jim. I like the priority on the south district. You know, like, like Jeff said, the fact that it's greenfield, and one of the things we've talked about is trying to get something in place before people come in, and we have acres and acres of single-family homes, and then it's too late to try and really address the missing middle and mixed-type housing. So I'm very supportive of that. Really interested in the interim missing middle code review. That's something that, I don't know how many years ago it's been now, that Matt Hayek and I toured around the north side, just with some of staff, and looking at, you know, what could we do with some of these rundown properties? And that's where we got to that first code change, that housing code change that we've made to try and put a little more teeth into that, so to kind of force people to keep up their properties. Yeah, I like the things that you've prioritized. In terms of whether we bid it out or not, that's a real challenge for me, because I don't know what other companies are out there and what, you know, like you say, if Opticos is the best of the best, then are we paying a premium for something that's not a whole lot better than maybe something, somebody else? I just have no clue.
My, if we do the competitive bidding, does that then commit us to, if we get a lower bidding, to say, well, never work? Okay, that's important. So the answer to that would be no, that if we did the competitive bidding, to see what else is out there. As far as I'm concerned, I'm extremely disappointed with the cost of this, and that's through no fault of staff at all. I just think with Opticos, in the sense that they seem like a really good firm, they are the best of the best. But really, what we're trying to do here is create pre-World War II neighborhoods that didn't have these fancy consultants, and they just made these awesome neighborhoods without all these, I mean, at least I think so. And now it's, to recreate that, we have to spend all of this money, which I'm committed to making a substantial investment in. But I would like to see whether we can get some nearly as good firms out there through- But I would like to see whether we can get some nearly as good firms out there through a competitive bidding process. So that's going to be my position. I think if I don't get the support for that, I think it seems like you've made a thoughtful prioritization of what we already have. But my first preference would be competitive bidding. The only other comment that I would have is that we do have the form-based code in this area. Are there things that we can utilize now to sort of expand out into the neighborhood, or is that just so much different?
Yeah, I think with the Riverfront Crossings Code, it's really too different.
Too much different. Who did that design, by the way?
I believe it was, was it HDR, is Bob? HDR.
Okay. And was that similar cost, in terms of that was a lot of money, too?
Yeah, I don't recall cost.
Okay.
I think a downside to issuing an RFP is that any other bidders would come in uninformed about the particularities of our community. And Opticos has already spent a lot of time here. They have a much better understanding, so we'd be giving that up.
But we could still pick, I mean, if we didn't like any of those firms, we could still pick Opticos with this proposal, right?
I don't know. Jeff, it'd be pretty hard. If we got a thousand, say, just hypothetically, a $100,000 difference in estimated cost, it'd be very hard to go with a higher-cost firm, would it not?
Yeah, so if you've participated in any of our RFP processes before, so before we even get proposals, we decide how we're going to weight them. So we'll do experience is 30% of the score, price is 40% of the score, and whatever other criteria we determine at the outset. We communicate that as part of the proposal process. So, a lot would have to go into how we weight that. If we want to have price be the predominant weight, then you're probably going to end up with the lowest bid. If you want to weight towards experience really heavily, you're going to probably end up here anyway. So, it's tricky to say how those things fall, but yes, it's always hard to award a contract. I mean, difficult politically to award a contract when there's a lower bid. You really have to be able to articulate why that experience is, why there's such value to that experience. I do think if we can work with Opticos, we're much better off than starting from scratch. We really liked the work that they did for us with the feasibility study. They clearly have a number of really good examples that we can look at and say, you know, this is the final product, and we'd be happy to get a similar-quality final product here. So, I think if we can get them down into our budget range, I'd feel very comfortable coming to you and recommending, without going through that process, that this is a good value. I'd feel very comfortable with that.
You offered up some very good ideas for decreasing the cost by quite a bit, and so you think that they might be open to negotiating with you on that?
Yeah, well, you know, just by, again, dropping the transportation study, they had it $70-some thousand, I think.
In the four-day charrette.
And then you're really taking most of the North Side cost out. So I think we could get there. I did fail. I highlighted it now, but I still am interested in that look back at our Riverfront Crossings Code, so I forgot to mention that to you, but I would want to include that $10,000 expense there.
You would not?
I would, yes.
Oh, okay.
I just forgot to mention it earlier.
Yeah, I would say I'm impressed, Jeff, because, you know, I guess I'll be very honest, in the sense that I was going to be a hard no on this particular project, just because I thought the cost was really exorbitant. I do appreciate you kind of pulling out different items that you prioritized that I think are important. And I think that will, as I think Jim mentioned before, have a focus more on the South District, because I agree, I think there's, you know, with all the planning and everything else that's kind of focused in that area, having a deeper conversation, more developed conversation with the help of this information, I think is, it's going to provide us with a more informed understanding as far as how we move forward. So, I am really excited about that. You know, I would, the RFP troubles me, you know, because I'm always interested in competitively putting projects out there, even from a negotiating standpoint. I mean, it would be interesting to come back and hear Opticos come back with a different price if they knew other potential bidders. I am a little bit worried about the time. I mean, that's
That's my concern, too.
That's an issue, because you said, I mean, throughout four months, right, Jeff? You know, for me, oh, man, come on. You know, I mean, Jeff, this is one of the times where you could have just said something and I'd have gone with it, in that sense.
This is what I'm saying. You can go with it.
Let's go with it, please.
Ultimately, this is not a contract I could approve. So, we're talking about giving me direction and staff direction to develop a scope, to draft up a contract and present that to you, or you'd still have final say.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor. I mean, I guess the reason why, I mean, in favor of moving forward with this particular company. I mean, the reason why is that we're already kind of, you know, down the road a lot with this company. I do have, your point, Jim, by the experience, it's going to take a lot to get people ready. I mean, so we're not only looking at four months, we're looking at six, maybe seven, eight months down the road. I don't like being put in this position, because I do like the RFP process to possibly negotiate situations. I'm not saying you did this, Joe, I'm just saying, in general, we need to think about that kind of ahead of time, as we're thinking about ensuring that there's competitively bid projects, just to make sure, I mean, because there could be a company, even though Opticos is the best of the best, there could be another company that has innovative thoughts or designs that we're just not necessarily thinking of, so.
But you're always going to be in that situation, Kingsley. I mean, whatever point in time you come and talk about it at council, you're always going to be talking about a longer period of time if you're going to bid it out, versus if you're going to go with somebody you already know. So, I mean, that's always going to be the case.
Yeah, I don't disagree. This wouldn't be the first time that the city has gone forward without kind of putting something back out for proposals. So, for example, we did an RFP for the downtown master plan consultant. We selected Genus Landscape Architects. When it came time to design the Washington Street project, and it came time to design the Ped Mall project, we just worked directly with Genus, because they were heavily invested in the project from the master plan standpoint. So this isn't new. This isn't something that we have never done before. I think it's a very similar situation here. Opticos was hired early on, and they're heavily invested in both these areas. They've got a head start. We felt really good about the working relationship we had with them, and we'd like to continue with them.
Yeah, I think that's the key issue, really, is, and where we have an opportunity, you know, Opticos came in, and from what you've said, Jeff, you're relieved of staff, and I think the council is pleased with the outcome. So, that, to me, it's now what we're talking about, is the cost of it. And I think we do have some good strategies. I do think there are ways of moving forward in the North Side, which is going to be incremental anyway, because of the, you know, the lot development is going to be kind of scattered. We can test some ideas without getting a full vocabulary of missing middle. In fact, it may, in some cases, be preferable if we limited the palette, particularly in the bulk of the neighborhood. It would be interesting, I know there's a lot of interest in North Side marketplace and refining, that's one of our great potential development areas. I would hope that's going to be, you know, still in there. I know there's expectation on it as well, so. But I do think there's room to negotiate this and scope it down while still preserving, you know, the two projects, which I think is critical.
Yeah, I agree. I guess since I'm new, I don't know this company very much, but Jeff, you just said, like, they've been on the base, they've done a very good job to the city, and, you know, you know the cost, and if you can negotiate a little bit with them, it would be great, too. But otherwise, I really support it and let it move forward, yeah.
It looks like you can get down below 385, if I'm reading this stuff correctly.
I think so.
Yeah. Okay, I would suggest we move ahead with Opticos.
One last comment that I would just make is, you know, to me, every dollar that we spend here with a good company, in some respects, is also spending money on affordable housing. Because we're talking about, you know, missing middle, we're talking about all kinds of price points in our housing. And so, quite frankly, I'd rather be spending more money here right now than doing the one-time, potentially one-time bump from the $650 to a million, because this is going to be, help with a long-term solution, with lots and lots of units potentially, as we go forward.
Well, you're right. The two key issues, and it sort of gets back to what I was saying before, we haven't made as much progress on the regulatory side. And that's what this is, and it's both affordability by design and then addressing inclusivity by design. Those are really both important. Affordability in and of itself can be problematic. I think it's, insofar as we don't want to segregate where we find opportunities for affordable housing, it's that integration that's critical to the, you know, to the strategy, in my view.
I agree with both of you, but it's still, it's not going to help, like, the very low-income people, because it's not going to be affordable for them as well. We have to change our way that we think for affordable housing. We have to think about people whose their income is like 30% or less of their area median income. This is not going to help them that much.
I would disagree. I think there's a potential that it does significantly.
There's potential, and we'll see, once we get
It should bring down development costs. You know, we're talking about, there's so many different segments of the population of the community that, you know, one can apply affordable housing to. But I don't think there's any question in my mind it will drive down development costs, and that's a very good thing for everyone in terms of affordability.
Yeah, for 30% or higher, but not like a very low-income.
No, that, I think, is
We can't talk about this more.
Yeah, we'll have ample opportunity to discuss this over time. Jeff, I think you got marching orders from us, right?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we have about 15 minutes. We could turn to the next item, which is clarification of agenda items.
One thing I was going to ask is if we could separate out the pedestrian mall from the consent calendar. One reason being, in looking at the information in the agenda packet regarding costs, there's been a change from the base bid costs from the work session to the, what's in the packet?
Well, maybe Jeff could just explain why the change, why it exists.
Yeah. Ron, help me out here, if I'm misstating anything. So, the final cost opinion wasn't ready for the work session that we had. They were still, so we were working off one that was a little old. When they revised the final cost opinion, it was substantially lower, which you typically don't see going, you know, at that late stage. My understanding is there was two items that were listed incorrectly, or calculated incorrectly in the cost opinion that we were working on. The first dealt with the limestone planter walls that we have in the pedestrian mall. We are trying to reuse as many of those as we can. There are a few instances where we're realigning planters, where we need to actually have new limestone brought in. And there was an error in the amount of new limestone we had to purchase. So they were vastly underestimating our ability to reuse the existing limestone planters. So that dropped material cost down quite a bit. And then we learned that in some of their material costs, they had a sales tax calculation in there as well. So the estimator that they had working with them, whether that was just part of their routine or their software, they had an automatic sales tax being calculated, and as a public entity, we don't have to do that. So those were the two primary drivers in bringing that down. There was nothing that changed. We didn't change the scope. We didn't take anything out. It was really those two changes and probably a few smaller adjustments that got us to where we are. We did add one more alternate. So you recall, the stage is going to be an alternate, and the Blackhawk Mini Park shade structure would be an alternate. We did add the alternate for how we treat the bricks. So, there's, you know, whether we want to preserve the bricks and perhaps give them away or sell them to the community members, or if we just want to have the contractor deal with them, like they might on a typical project, just haul them off, and they can resell them, or they can do whatever they want. We'll bid that as an alternate, so we know what that cost difference is. But it will be more expensive for a contractor to care for the bricks, to wash them, politize them, deliver them to where we want them, as opposed to just haul them off and do whatever else they might do with them.
Do you still want to pull?
Well, the reason I was thinking of pulling it is so the general public would have a better idea if
Oh, we can do that, if you want to.
I guess I would support pulling it. The only other question I had was regarding the shade structure. We made a decision to keep that as an alternate. I guess I had thought we were going to maybe potentially yank the shade structure or not. We didn't have the votes for that.
Just an alternate bid, yeah.
Okay, well, that was my recollection on that, but I would support pulling it for the regular agenda.
So, that's item 4E2. Okay, other, I have like five minor items, but does anybody else have other agenda items?
I have just one, or I have a couple as well. So, mine's 4F3. What's the process? Like, what's the harm? I guess I just, it came before us, but I didn't know, Kelly, whether or not that needs to go through you or some type of committee.
We did go ahead and send out an email to the remaining three companies, since the letter was from Yellow, just to get their feedback on it. We didn't hear from any of the companies at all. And then we also reached out to staff for equipment, because they do the inspections, and then the police department for their feedback. And kind of the consensus was between equipment, police, and even staff in the clerk's office is the question of, with that soft meter, and how we're going to monitor the rates, you know, just not knowing the program, whether folks would go towards like an app-based, I'm sure there's tons of different apps that are similar, you know, how we're going to monitor that.
Well, and can you, what is a soft meter? Because it looked like it stated it was kind of like Uber, but then it didn't seem like Uber at all.
I think it's more of an app-based.
Yeah, so it's a tablet, essentially, that they would have in there that calculates the charge for the ride, as opposed to an actual meter. Difference is, the meter is calibrated and tested. We know that they can't tamper with that to adjust the rate. So there's just a question of how secure a mobile system is. Prelimarily, Simon's done a little bit of a look into this, because there are, as Mr. Bradley alludes to, other states or areas that have allowed these. Clearly, people are using them. States have permitted them, I believe, you know, California, he mentions, allow for that technology. But honestly, we're just not familiar enough with it right now to tell you. But I think on the surface, if we can just make ourselves comfortable at a staff level that the smart meters cannot be tampered with and would provide an accurate reading, then I don't know why we wouldn't. You know, they're really asking to use a similar technology as the ride-sharing companies.
I was just going to say, I mean, anything we can do to make them align with where we are with Uber, because I think in terms of monitoring the prices, well, we can't with Uber either. I mean, I think, to me, that ship has sailed. A year ago, when the legislature took away our home rule authority to regulate transportation network cities or companies, and I think it's incumbent upon us to have regulatory parity with those companies. So, anything, if he can get more support from other taxi cab companies, I am all for a work session or something along those lines, because I think they're operating in an environment that is still incredibly unfair vis-à-vis Uber. And I think we should facilitate, put them on an equal platform.
I don't disagree. I just want to make sure we don't forget about the driver, because I'm interested in how the driver, the driver piece may change as well, because I understand the meter and sitting there and having the meter tick up. Not, I'm more concerned about how that, is a soft meter going to introduce a situation where, as a cab company comes up, does it change, you know, me knowing how much it's going to cost from point A to point B?
Okay, staff's looking into this, so they know we're interested. All right. Any other agenda items?
4D4, Julie, real quick, you know, this is a, I know it's the fees and restructuring. I keep, I kind of keep bringing this up, and the predecessor was here, I was bringing the same question, as far as equitable programming between the Rec Center and Mercer. There's just been this constant conversation about, you know, making sure that, you know, we have the same type of programming and people are interested in paying for it at Mercer. Has that been a part of the consideration in regards to this particular item?
It's a consideration in how we program the facilities. We program based on the uses and what we're hearing from the different user groups at both facilities.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to ask the question, because I was told I need to ask, so.
Question about one of the other correspondence items, about the naming of things. And I know there's a policy, maybe Jeff could explain that, because I don't know it verbatim, what the process is for naming.
Yeah, we do have a naming policy that's more geared towards, you know, if someone in the community wants to, you know, name a facility, I believe, you know, in rough terms, you have to contribute 50% of the cost of whatever it is, the park shelter or whatever it may be. And if it's going to And if it's going to be named after someone that is deceased, there's a two-year waiting period for that to occur. I think that what you're getting correspondence on is the pedestrian mall stage that's in the, that'll be in the plans and specs. I think you're going to hear from someone at your regular council meeting about that as well. Certainly, the council has the ability to rename a park, a stage, a pavilion, however you see fit. I think the policy is more geared towards, again, someone requesting to rename something in honor of either a loved one or someone beloved in the community, whatever it may be.
Seems to me if we're going to rename it, we should have a process for soliciting possible names.
I'd agree.
All right. Do, any of you have any other agenda items?
For me, 4F5, Judith Croft, she brought up the pizza boxes, which made me think of cardboard. I've been getting a lot of complaints about, primarily from commercial, both landlords as well as downtown business owners about our cardboard, our new cardboard policy, which I'm very much supportive continuing on with the cardboard recycling. But I just think we need to continue to work with them constructively in terms of solutions. I know, I think for the residential multifamily, they're going to come online this fall, because I understand there's a problem with landlords getting fined for primarily what their students are doing. I just think we need to really keep a close eye on that, because that seems to be of our new environmental initiatives, the most frequent complaint that I hear. So, I don't know if you have a quick response on that.
I'm not privy to the complaints. I really, they haven't come through my office.
Haven't yet.
Ron, I don't know if you've received any.
I've been getting them.
But as you hear them, send them our way or at least convey what you're hearing, and we can adjust accordingly.
Certainly will.
We can certainly do some targeted education. But we are in this period where not all of the multifamily has been converted yet to where they are having recycling. Yet, the landfill is not accepting it. So, Waste Management or Republic or whoever is picking up at these apartments, and there's large amounts of cardboard, and those landlords are not offering the recycling service yet, yeah, they may be getting fined at the scale house for having that cardboard.
That's it for me.
Okay, I'd like to make, mention something about three specific agenda items. I'll be very brief. Item 4F13, again, has to do with correspondence. There's a January 31 inquiry via email from John M. Whalen, Director of Labor's Economic Development Corporation. That sounded like a pretty interesting.
Oh, yeah.
Suggestion. I hope we're going to follow through on, you know, connecting with them and seeing what we can learn and whether we could do something with it.
I'd agree, Jim.
I thought about that, too. I thought even Bill Gerhart could come in and.
Yeah, sure seems like it. With regard to 4F14, which is an invitation from Reverend Lauren Lyon at Trinity and Reverend Thomas Waltoise, Geneva Campus Ministry, I've already contacted Reverend Lyon about that, and I'm going to have a conversation with him and maybe proceed, maybe not. Item 11, it's a resolution concerning accepting funds for the reconstruction of the Second Avenue Bridge. Given the time, I'll be very brief. Ron, could you and I have a very brief conversation about this in our 20-minute break? Great, thanks. Anything else to bring up with regard to agenda items? Okay, well, we should take a break now and come back to our formal meeting, and afterwards we'll have to pick up with the information packet discussion. Okay, we left off at the info packet discussion section. You know, I think we are supposed to have, give ourselves a chance to look at the January 4th packet, January 11th packet, January 18th packet, and the ones that follow, right? So, anything about the January 4th packet?
I did, but we've covered it all already.
That was part of the reason why I wanted, yeah.
Anybody else? Let's go to the January 11th packet. I'd like to mention IP8, which is the, basically, the Consumption-Based Emission Inventory Report. I find it to be a really interesting and stimulating report. I have a question about it, but I'm really also wondering what the staff is thinking about how we can integrate the report's recommended actions and initiatives into city codes and practices. You don't have to answer that right now, but reading that report certainly brought that question to mind. So, but a detailed question I have, and I don't know if anybody can answer it, but maybe Ashley can, maybe Jeff can. Am I correct in understanding that the consumption-based emissions are in addition to the territorial ones? They're additive, not one's part of the other?
We can get back to you and confirm that.
Yeah, I couldn't really tell from the report, so I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure.
Putting the territorial.
Sure. All right. That's pretty much all I wanted to say about that, but it's a really interesting and informative report, and if you haven't had a chance to read it, I suggest you at least read the first several pages.
The thing that struck me the most out of that is that basically, our consumption in the Iowa City area is four times what it needs to, should be to be sustainable on a planet level, which was pretty interesting and also discouraging.
Yeah, that's an interesting tool, ecological footprint, EF analysis.
Yeah, using hectares and.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I'm with you, Jim. I would really encourage people, if they haven't read it, to at least read that first part of it, the executive summary. It's very interesting. Data and graphs are interesting.
It really pushes us to do more than we're already doing, but let's get done with what we're already doing. Okay, let's see. Do any of you have any other questions about that information packet?
IP9, Tracy gave just a brief talk about the update on the university program, but she mentioned in there that she would be open and staff would be open to a possible work session discussion sometime about the university program. I think we could do.
I would like that.
Could add it to our list?
Can I say why, Jim?
Sorry? If you want to, you can.
Well, I mean, the only issue there would be the issue of the duplex. I think that's something that we should explore about making a duplex eligible, because I think for some of those properties, we would be able to purchase them if we were considering, you know, them as a duplex. So, each one would be a separate unit, is my point.
Sounds like a reasonable question to ask, Jim.
You want that on the pending work session?
Yeah, I think we should put it on it. At least, just to hear from Tracy about the university program and what she's recommending, and then Rockney's asking this question. At some point, we'll have to look at the whole pending list, because, you know, we need.
It's really long.
It's really long, so, yeah.
We haven't incorporated everything from budget.
We're going to have to decide what to kind of skim through, all right? Anyhow, I don't think this is one of those. Anything else on the January 11th packet?
I would just point out on IP10, that was the Budget and Compliance Officer Memo. I don't know what page of that document it is. I just want to quickly read from what Moody's wrote. And this was dated May 30th of 2013, but they were talking about the state of Iowa as a result of the property tax reform. And, you know, according to Moody's, local governments that may experience disproportionately higher revenue losses include regions that have a substantial commercial base, a large share of multi-residential property such as college towns, or significant amounts of telecommunications property. And they were talking about the decrease in property tax revenues that they expected could start in some of those communities, starting in 14 and 15. While we haven't seen the decrease in the revenues, because we're still growing our tax base and it's been growing quite a bit in the last two or three years, they are, in their outlook, they are pointing this out in the state of Iowa, their concern with property tax reform, what that's going to do to property tax revenues. And so, I think as, you know, as we go through and are issuing GO bonds each year, we have to look really, really carefully at whatever Moody's is putting in those evaluations in terms of any concerns that they are seeing with Iowa City. Because keep in mind, they do not see us as a typical triple-A bond-rated city.
True enough. Okay, let's move to the January 18th packet.
IP7.
Thank you, Eleanor. I don't know if you need council guidance as far as moving forward, but I feel like you clearly laid out, excuse me, it's getting late, clearly laid out kind of why you chose to do what you chose, and I feel comfortable moving forward in that way. And just so I'm clear for a public, it's keeping the, you know, the gender requirement as it pertains to ensuring that we have state balance, or I think state requires a gender balance, but incorporating gender identity as part of the demographic information.
Anything else, anything else in the January 18th packet?
So, do we need counsel moving forward on that?
I'm sorry.
Just need direction, that's fine, if you're good with that.
Okay, I didn't know if everybody, okay.
It's been brought up a little bit, but just if anybody is still watching at this point in the meeting or looks back at our videos, the citywide survey that was IP4 in the January 18th packet, I think was really interesting. John referenced it earlier in terms of one of the topics we were talking about. Just a lot of, I think, really interesting information that people had in terms of comparing our community with other communities. You know, we spent, how much money did we spend doing this?
Probably close to $20,000.
Yeah, so I would certainly hope, even if the general public doesn't read it, I would certainly hope that council members take the time to really kind of go through this in some detail and really think about, you know, how our community is responding to these various topics, because I thought it was a lot of good information there. And the other one, which I think we'll be certainly talking about more, and we haven't really had a whole lot of chance, other than we've been talking about a certain amount through the strategic planning, and that is the Strategic Housing Master Plan that's in there, IP6. And that is something that we certainly need to be, I think, looking at more and having more discussion with the University of Iowa and with Corleville about how any of us are going to be moving forward either on our own or in cooperation with each other in terms of student housing.
With regard to item 4, which Susan just mentioned a second ago, I would agree it's a very thorough survey and very informative, but it's also, it also contains a lot of information. So, I'm hopeful that someone on the staff will be able to parse it, really go through it carefully, and I imagine that's happening, but there's a lot of material there. And it raises all sorts of questions on my part, but I won't go into that because of the hour. The housing study, it's full of really valuable information that we need to pay careful attention to. And, I don't know, on the strategic plan, IP3, the Strategic Plan Preparation Memo that Jeff wrote us, it contained all that information from the various departments, and I really appreciate the concise summaries from each of the departments. It was really very instructive to read them in relation to our ongoing discussions about the strategic plan and in relation to the survey and in relation to this consumption-based emission inventory. I mean, all that stuff kind of wove together for me. So, those are some things I wanted to mention, and maybe there's one or two other things, but let's see. I take so many notes. All right. That's all I wanted to say about the January 18th packet. Can we turn to January 25th?
B3, just the Social Justice and Racial Equity Report. You know, I know it's obviously labor-intensive, and I know that other departments provide that information, but there's just a lot of steps that we're taking that, I mean, I think that in connection with the conversation that just occurred via community comment and also, I mean, Susan's comments, among other council members' comments as well, I mean, there is a lot more to do, as Barbara said, but I think that there's a lot of work that we are doing, and I want to make sure we highlight that, because it's not, it's not easy. And I think that sometimes we overlook some of the steps that we have been taking and looking to the future, but it's not easy. I mean, those took, it took time and it took a lot of effort to get to where we are now.
Sure. Well, along those lines, Kingsley, I think, you know, with those reports, you know, it's easy to sort of think, oh, they're just sort of reporting stuff that's already happening, but no, I mean, there was actually a lot of unique planning activities, so it's not just routine events. It's really implemented, really what you put into place six years ago or thereabouts with the diversity, that Hawk Diversity Committee. And it's nice to sort of see that those wheels still in motion, it's still bearing fruit.
I think we've made huge strides. Not enough, but huge. I guess I'd like to mention IP5, tentative council meeting schedule. And all I want to do is point out to Kelly and the rest of you, I have a conflict on June 19th, since I'm scheduled to go on the Civil Rights Tour.
I'm going to be gone then, too.
Oh, oh, that's right, we're going together.
But we'll just have fun with five of us.
Yeah, whatever.
When's that meeting?
19th of June.
There have been times when in the summer we have not necessarily had two meetings every single month. So, we may just want to wait till we, yeah, usually it's been July or August or both. But if you guys, if two of you have a conflict, we might just want to look at what the schedule looks like as we get closer and see if we can.
Yeah, so.
I had a question about the June ones anyway, because June 5th is the primary, and I know in November, we moved the meeting because it was election night.
Oh, okay.
Of course, none of us are for election that day, but it is a primary, and it's the gubernatorial primary, and so with, consider it may be a conflict. To me, we can just change and have one meeting.
Yeah, we might want to do something with the June meetings, yeah.
Yeah, it's a ways down the line, but, yeah.
So, I guess we.
I don't know how it works really, but usually June, I'm not going to be in town.
June and.
Not here at all until, like, for six weeks.
So, we're going to need to, because I'm traveling a lot.
We're going to have a quorum.
I'm traveling, I was worried about you saying that. I'm traveling a ton. I think I'm flying out almost every month, and so we'll need to think about that as we move forward.
Well, and keep in mind, one of the things that we, you know, we've done is made, you know, the electronic participation available, if people can use that when they're traveling. And part of, we did that was to try and minimize changing dates so that we could be, you know, as consistent as possible with the first and third Tuesday for the public. So, not to say that we can't and shouldn't make some changes, but if people can use that, that's also an option, so.
Because while I'm looking, I guess so that we have one on June 5th, I guess, June 5th will be, and I said, okay, I will attend that one and execute. But if you want to, like, as Pauline said, you want to carry that, I would like to know in advance because of my ticket.
Sure.
Sure.
I mean, if we move that one, I would suggest if it worked for people, we do the same thing we did in November, move it to Monday night, which would be the 4th.
There's a thought.
Sounds good to me.
Which would avoid the primary on the 5th. I mean, people just want to plan on that?
I think so. I'll take a quick look.
And we can.
Yeah, it's no problem for me.
Sounds good.
I may be late, I have a training.
Fourth works for you, Mas?
Sounds like the fourth works.
Are we leaving the second meeting then, or?
Leave the second meeting on for now.
Yeah, we might have to revisit it, but for now, leave it on there. I know I won't be there.
I'm not going to be there, too.
So, we know three are not going to be here.
Yeah, so, it's probably not a good thing.
Then, maybe folks need.
I actually disagree. I got a couple of things I want to push through, so.
We'll have to revisit the June 19th meeting. Can we move to the February 1st packet?
IP9, OK, because I see schedule. Kelly would probably like us to get that squared away.
Yeah, I want to say something about that. You know, you all know this, I think. I accidentally missed my interview on this 3rd of January, so I'm in arrears. I'd be happy to do this twice over the, over that period of time that's covered by the announcements. So, I'd like to volunteer for Valentine's Day, February 14th.
Okay.
March the 7th and April the 4th.
I'll take the February 21st and April 11th.
I could do the 28th of February.
I can.
April 18th for me.
I can do March 21st. I can do March 21st.
Hold on one second. Yeah, newbie.
Say a movie?
Newbie.
What do you have left, Kelly?
March 14th, March 28th, April 25th and May 2nd. And then whether you're going to plug staff in one of those
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Spots.
So Mazza here should probably go next.
I wasn't the one bad week, I don't know.
Yeah, so you would just
Pick any of those dates that
This is the next slide, so.
Did you pick one last? You didn't pick any.
So what are the dates that she could choose from?
March 14th, March 28th, April 25th or May 2nd.
We can do it together, Charlie. Can you say it one more time?
March 14th, March 28th, April 25th or May 2nd.
I could do March 14th.
April 25th?
25th, yeah.
Mazza here, April 25th?
Oh, okay.
We'll do it both together.
Okay.
Okay.
What was the last one? I missed it.
There's March 28th and May 2nd.
And you want to leave one of them for departments, or maybe two?
If you want to continue to do that.
Yeah.
March 14th and April 18th.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood. Ashley? Any dates you'd like?
What?
So which one's still open?
I was going to say, do you want to leave just one date for staff, or did you want to do two?
Let's do two.
Well, there's a pretty long period of time, right? There's, what, 12 dates on there? I don't know.
There were quite a few this time.
Yeah, we could leave two.
Can you list?
That's all right with staff.
So March 28th and May 2nd?
Sure.
Yeah, staff for those two.
It better be good, I mean, listening.
Okay, so that's KXIC, right?
Okay.
I want to mention IP3, pending work session topics. So just to be clear, on February 20th, we're going to complete the strategic plan?
Yeah, we'll have Chief Matherly in the strategic plan.
Okay.
And this list will get longer, so what I plan to do is, now that we're kind of through the budget, we'll take all that long list from that memo, and for whatever didn't fall into the strategic plan discussions, I'll move everything else over into pending, and then you'll have to sort through that list at some point, because it'll probably look pretty daunting to you.
We'll start it again at 4:30.
Okay, anything else on the February 1st packet?
Right, so the next work session is going to be based off of the strategic plan?
We're just finishing the strategic plan.
Okay, sounds good.
And hearing from Chief Matherly.
It isn't a way we can start, 4:30, since we have the chief and
Since we have what?
The chief will come.
Oh, yeah, right.
4:30 again.
What do you all think? I don't have any opposition to that.
Schedule mine until 4:00. Open it until 4:00.
Okay?
It's fine, if you all want to start early, that's fine.
Ah, well, let's do it.
Okay. We'll start at 4:30.
4:30?
4:30. Which brings us to council updates on the signed boards, commissions and committees. Maybe we could start with Susan and move left.
Sure. We've had another meeting of the Steering Committee for the Access Center. Things are continuing to move along. The, still a lot of decisions to be made, but I guess I would say, management is, the idea of who's going to manage and how that's going to work is continuing to be discussed, so I think we're making progress there. We have another meeting coming up that I just got an invitation to tonight, and I don't have the date of it in front of me. So that's going fine. JEC, we canceled our last meeting, basically for lack of a quorum, and there's nothing, we've already passed the budget, so that, we meet quarterly, so we just kind of canceled that meeting and we're going to meet in March, waiting until that one. I think that's it.
Okay.
I missed the MPOJC with my flu, but got ICAD coming up on Friday, so nothing more much to report.
So I did the City of Liturgy update already with the one book, two book. Briefly, though, with MPJOC, very substantive discussion every once in a while, that sort of, I think one of our staff has called, that's the most important body that no one really knows about, in the sense that, but we brought up the train issue, the Crandic Trail Line, and I think there were some discussions about, you know, what the future of that looked like. I think that's a really exciting project. Hopefully, we can figure out a way to expedite that as quickly as we possibly can. I know that it's an extremely complicated issue with all the jurisdictions, but for the public out there, we're looking at evaluating a third-stage study for the Crandic Rail Line, and we're also, I believe, looking at a possibility of using that as a rails-to-trails concept. So both of them are really exciting opportunities for the community, and I'm really looking forward to the possibility of getting some alternative transportation modes going forward. So stay tuned on that project, you know, it's going to take over the course of years, but hopefully we can get those years into single digits rather than double digits.
Any board, commission? Yeah?
Not yet. I guess I have, the first one will be on the 20-something.
Okay. Kingsley?
Oh, we were supposed to bring back to our community something. Can't remember what that was, at the MPo.
We already got authorization on the third-stage study.
I think I'm going to be, I'll frame up the issue on the federal aid swap to you.
Yeah.
We need, the MPo needs some feedback on that, so I
That's actually a big issue, yeah.
I haven't packaged that up yet.
Something big.
Something big.
I just couldn't remember what it was. Well, you sort of remembered it, I didn't.
Yeah, there's kind of some controversy on that.
Yeah, sorry, I just, it was literally in my mind, but I couldn't think of the words, so I just, you know, subliminally sent it over to Jeff, and Jeff's got it out there.
Telemetry, we figured it out. Yeah, same on the MPo and the controversial discussion about the share swap program. ECIOG has not met yet, nothing.
Okay, I get to be last. The Convention and Visitors Bureau regular board meeting on the 18th was canceled, but on the 23rd, Jeff and I participated in a strategic planning meeting with other people on the CVB Board. It was a fruitful discussion where they indicated they had two initiatives they wanted to focus attention on. One has to do with the Crandic Line, and the other has to do with the Iowa River Corridor. So I was really very pleased with both of those judgments. Also, there was a, with regard to the Partnership for Alcohol Safety, there was a very interesting conversation in the PAS meeting on the 23rd, and I'm going to ask Simon to kind of turn away from that and help me remember pretty much what the spokesperson said when they attended, when they spoke to us at the PAS meeting. I know, catching it off guard, but
Oh, no, not at all. And I was doing work emails, I just, everybody's aware of that. So there will not be any legislation expected coming out of that this year. The ABD is going through their stakeholder meetings for the rest of this year and will be ideally forwarding a proposed legislative change for next year. We are very pleased with the way that the discussion has been moving so far. We expect that there will be some legislation that will give us some more local control over the licensing process and better clarity on the good moral standing. You know, that's where we really have a hard time enforcing what we want to with alcohol licenses. There is some legislation that's been proposed this year that Eleanor's office has been working with both ABD staff and our lobbyist on, smaller changes that would affect our permitting process, but not so much on the addressing problem bars.
Super, thank you.
Yep, of course.
Gustavo, I should give you a chance to say anything you want to say, you know?
Yeah, pretty much, we talked about that. Talked about nighttime mayor initiatives that, right now, we're looking at doing a series of events through downtown, as Ben had been saying. What else? Fraternity and sorority life was changing their code of going about things to promote more, I guess, safe alcohol practices or something like that. I'm not sure about the details. Other than that, that pretty much sums up the meeting.
Okay, good deal. All right, folks, I think we're done with our work session. It's been a long night. Thanks for your patience and done with the meeting.